Can everybody hear me? If so, raise your hand. I'm looking at you, chief. I see your eyeballs. Okay, if you guys can hear me back there, then we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all very much for joining us here on this momentous occasion. We are here because everybody here cared about the late Mayor Harry Price. He was certainly a remarkable man. He touched many lives. He dedicated, this is what I find just amazing. He dedicated more than 60 years of his life to public service, whether that be through service to our nation in his military service, to educating our youth here in the Fairfield community, and then certainly for a couple of decades representing the city of Fairfield and 17 of those years as mayor. The city council, after Mayor Price's passing, had lots of conversations. They were trying to figure out how it is exactly that they wanted to honor and remember the late mayor. And in very thoughtful reflection on how to do that, they chose to rename this council chamber in his honor as well as Civic Center Drive. So what used to be Civic Center Drive is now Harry T. Price Drive. And I think that both of those are fitting honors for a man that gave so much to this community and to the city of Fairfield. I'm David Gassaway. I'm city manager for the city of Fairfield. I am going to be calling out some names here after we have a few brief remarks, then we're going to get to unveiling for the first time ever the Harry T. Price Memorial Council Chamber. And so before I start turning it over to our speakers, I do want to just acknowledge all of our elected representatives that have joined us here this evening. So I will start by recognizing Lois Cross from Congressman John Garamendi's office. From Senator Bill Dodd's office, we have Ron Turner. From Assemblymember Lori Wilson's office, we have Kai Yasebo. I saw, I think I saw County Supervisor Monica Brown around. Yep, there she is. And then we have all of our council members here tonight. Mayor Kat Moy, Vice Mayor Pam Bertoni, Councilman Rick Vaccaro, Councilwoman Doris Panduro, Councilman Scott Tonason, Councilwoman Kay Patrice Williams, and Councilman Doug Carr. Let's give them a big round of applause. I also want to recognize, I saw a friendly face in the crowd as I was coming in, former council member Chuck Tim, who knew Harry very well. And then after the mayor makes some remarks, I'll have Ron Turner up from Senator Dodd's office to make a few remarks. Then we're going to have a poem by our poet laureate Suzanne Bruce. And then finally, it is really an honor, oh, there we go, now it's coming through a little better, I can even hear it now. And then we will end with Mayor Price's family and his daughter Pam will say a few words. So right now, please welcome up Mayor Catherine Moy.
Good evening. Thank you for coming to celebrate and memorialize a man whose dedication and service touched all of us, Mayor Harry T. Price. I knew Harry for decades, first as a journalist and then as a colleague. We served together on the city council for 14 years, and as his successor, I'm deeply honored to be a part of this historic moment. Harry began serving Fairfield in 1965 as a teacher. Eventually, his love of education and service expanded to include public service. Harry spent five years as a planning commissioner and 25 years on the city council. 17 of those years, he led the council as mayor. As our city manager said, when we started thinking about what we could do to memorialize all that Harry has done for our city, for kids, for education, and the big part of our city Travis Air Force Base, which he always worked to protect, we really thought about it for a while. It took us a bit, we kept throwing things out, a park's not enough, this is not enough. I wanted to make sure that those closest to him got to bring their thoughts. I called Councilman Chuck Tim, and who was the closest to Harry than all the rest of us. He was very close with Chuck, and Chuck would call him Pops sometimes. And so it meant a lot to talk, for me to talk to Chuck, because he knew him in a very different way. And Harry was, of course, Chuck's teacher way back when, and had a lot to do with Chuck's long-term marriage to his high school sweetheart. So right over here is a rock at the base of this magnolia tree to my left, and a street sign just around the corner that was placed to honor Mayor Price. But the chamber, it seemed like a foregone conclusion, really. The council chamber is where important decisions are made, where all ideas are welcome and shared, and where the mayor's name will live on. Tonight, we honor Harry T. Price, and we recognize his commitment to education, his many years of public service, and his unwavering love for all things Fairfield. And as we all know, he liked to talk about, "We're the sweetest city," really, I'd like to say in the world, but he said, "You know, I'm west of the Mississippi," and he was absolutely correct. He loved that Jelly Belly was here. We pay tribute to a leader, a teacher, and a visionary, whose spirit continues to live on in this community. May this chamber serve as a source of inspiration for generations to come, a constant reminder that one person's dedication can indeed shape the destiny of a city. So if you can hear me, I know you can, Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours eternally.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Now, Ron Turner from Senator Dodd's office.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ron Turner with State Senator Bill Dodd's office, and the senator is stuck in traffic on Jameson Canyon, and so he's sending me crazy text messages as to what to say, but I'm just gonna wing it. But don't tell him I did that. So this is really different in the sense that after the nine years that I've been with Senator Dodd's office, I would always get these evaluations when I was with Mayor Price at speaking engagements. And so, "Mayor, how did I do?" You know, this kind of reminds me back in high school. Did I get a scale of 1 to 10? Did I get a score of 10? Well, Ron, you could've worked on a bit better. Oh, soft, the rest is story. So I'm one of Harry's students from high school, and let me have my other two classmates come up, Chuck and his lovely, lovely wife. Come on, Pat. And so the three of us have lots of stories, lots of time, lots of experiences with Mayor Price, and it's during our formative years. And that relationship that we had with Mayor Price brought us all together as high school students, as friends, as business partners, as colleagues and coworkers. And State Senator Bill Dodd wanted all of you to know the love that he has, that Mayor Price has for the city, the love that he has for the city staff and the Fairfield community, and that there will never be another Harry T. Price that will have that impact on a community such as Mr. Price, as we called him in high school, the person that we'll always remember. Chuck?
Thank you. Just real briefly, you never know what's gonna happen. You just never know. You think back to 1971, '72, Ron, and obviously my wife, Pat now, Mr. Harry Price, we called him Mr. Price. And Mayor Moye is right, occasionally I'd call him Pops. "Pops, how are you?" I said this at his funeral, and I'll say it again. They had given me a card, and on the card, he said, "Chuck, you make an old teacher very proud." And what I say is, no, you made an old student very proud. So in honor of Harry Price, my wife, Pat, and myself, this is amazing, I was telling his grandson just a couple of minutes ago, his name will be on this building and on that street until it is no more. So, Ron Turner, thank you, sir. Pat, I love you, sweetie. I love Mr. Harry Price, and we all do. Thank you very much.
All right, now invite up Suzanne Bruce, poet laureate, to say a few words.
Thank you and good evening. When writing this poem for this beautiful presentation, I was reminded not only of Harry's kindness, but how much he loved teaching, as you just heard from these wonderful people. It was through his wonderful words and gentle actions that we all learned so much, remembering Harry. Outside this esteemed chamber, an impassioned light shines inside all of us. It carries memories, illuminates the past, guides future paths, beams with ambitious visions. Harry steered this city for many years, taught us we can all teach, lessons propelled by his wisdom. He reminded us that learning can happen when patience is present. He taught us how inspiration can flow like a river, crossing through the unknown, how our senses are tributaries of discovery. He taught us to look beyond, we have to look within. Outside this esteemed chamber, we memorialize Harry's name, although his voice is not physically here. His leadership, his beliefs, his love of Fairfield are felt through current sights and sounds and smiles, recollections woven into dreams that will live on and on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Suzanne. And now finally, as we prepare to unveil the chamber, I would like to invite up Pam Winneker, Mr. Price's daughter, and their family to say a few words, and then remain up here afterwards, and if I could get the city council to start gathering for the unveiling.
Distinguished guests, city staffers, police officers, firefighters, and members of the public, thank you so much for being here today. It is truly an honor that you, the people of Fairfield, have chosen to remember my father, Mayor Harry T. Price, by dedicating the city council chambers in his name. It is altogether fitting that we do so right here, as I vividly remembered him making his announcement right over there, standing in front of the bell, of when he was running for mayor with my two sons, standing by our side, holding up signs, "Elect my grandpa." When my parents moved to Fairfield from Pennsylvania in 1965, shortly before I was born, Fairfield was a very small town of only about 30,000 people. There was no mall, J.C. Penney's was right downtown, Fairfield High School had just been built, and I remember attending the opening of this civic center establishment here, this complex, in 1971. In the past 50 years, Fairfield has grown exponentially, which brought both triumphs and challenges. During his tenure as mayor, my dad advocated for programs to bring jobs to Fairfield, to make the city safer, to improve streets and roads, to support the young and the elderly, and to champion Travis Air Force Base. He truly was Fairfield's mayor. It is for you, the elected members of the city council, and those who will come after you, to carry on the unfinished work my dad began here. May his name on this chamber remind you to do as he did, to reach across the aisle, to find common ground, to mentor the next generation, to bring leaders of different faiths and backgrounds together to support the people of Fairfield. Acknowledge the importance of Travis Air Force Base to the local economy and to the protection of the United States of America. His time here on earth may be gone, but his legacy continues in his example of servant leadership. As he was wont to say, "Don't look back, keep looking forward." Thank you.
All right, come on up, city council.
We've got two sets of scissors.
Two sets of scissors.
We're gonna cut one side, and we don't want to be underneath it, he's gonna come down. So you guys are cutting at the same time, so he's just gonna save that one back. Are you ready? You wanna give us the word, Mayor? One, two, and go! Woo! That's good. Thank you, thank you, y'all, thank you. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Thank you for being here, thank you. And you're good? Yeah. We're gonna take a picture. Okay. Oh, okay, we'll take a group picture. You'll all be in it, too. Can you get us all? Can we go? Come on in.
And one, two, three, and one, two, three. Yeah. Good, great.
That pole was gonna smack someone up. It's beautiful.
Okay. We have a page of Harry T. Price.
Right here, as I vividly remembered him making his announcement right over there, standing in front of the bell of when he was running for mayor with my two sons, standing by our side, holding up signs, "Elect my grandpa." When my parents moved to Fairfield from Pennsylvania in 1965, shortly before I was born, Fairfield was a very small town of only about thirty thousand people. There was no mall, J.C. Penney's was right downtown, Fairfield High School had just been built, and I remember attending the opening of this civic center establishment here, this complex, in 1971. In the past fifty years Fairfield has grown exponentially, which brought both triumphs and challenges. During his tenure as mayor, my dad advocated for programs to bring jobs to Fairfield, to make the city safer, to improve streets and roads, to support the young and the elderly, and to champion Travis Air Force Base. He truly was Fairfield's mayor. It is for you, the elected members of the city council, and those who will come after you, to carry on the unfinished work my dad began here. May his name on this chamber remind you to do as he did, to reach across the aisle, to find common ground, to mentor the next generation, to bring leaders of different faiths and backgrounds together to support the people of Fairfield. Acknowledge the importance of Travis Air Force Base to the local economy and to the protection of the United States of America. His time here on earth may be gone, but his legacy continues in his example of servant leadership. As he was wont to say, "Don't look back, keep looking forward." Thank you.
All right, come on up, City Council.
We've got two sets of scissors.
Two sets of scissors.
You want to pack one side, and we don't want to be underneath it, he's going to come down. So you guys can kind of hit at the same time, so he's just going to save that one back. Are you ready? Want to give us the word, Mayor?
...
...
...
...
One, two, and go!
...
...
Woo!
...
That's good!
...
Thank you, thank you, y'all, thank you.
...
...
...
...
Thank you.
...
Oh, thank you.
...
Thank you for being here, thank you.
...
And you're good?
...
Yeah.
...
We're taking pictures.
...
Okay.
...
Okay, we'll take a group picture. You all be in it, too. Can you get us all? Come on in. And one, two, three, and one, two, three. Yeah! Good, good.
That pole was going to smack someone up. It's beautiful.
Okay. We have a road to hurry to try.
And...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
To adjourn tonight's meeting for a lifelong friend of mine and a longtime Fairfield resident, Dwayne Yarrow, if I may.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman, and my condolences.
Thank you. That's my report.
All right. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening, and thanks for everyone who's watching from home. I just will reiterate that the Veterans Day commemoration and the parade, great job, everyone who put that together. Our veterans deserve to be celebrated. And I want to just make one more announcement to say thank you for the Fairfield Clergy Action Network, Fairfield Can. Today, we had our annual Thanksgiving dinner, and it's the best that it's been ever. We served over 450 people who came in today and had a delectable, delicious, extravagant even dinner. A sit-down meal for many families that will be their Thanksgiving dinner. And so, it was a powerful moment, and if my colleagues will indulge me, I want to say thank you. My mom always taught me to stop and say thank you to the people who worked so very hard to make this happen. So, I'm going to thank all of the members of the Clergy Action Network and everybody who joined in. So, it's City Church, Latan Jones, I don't know if he's here tonight. Thank you for the 10 turkeys and for his rendition today of the Lord's Prayer a cappella. Raise the roof. Thank you so much. Marina Church, Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Fairfield Church of Christ, and Solano Christian Academy, Calvary Baptist Church. Costco was in the house today. Costco not only donated all of the mashed potatoes and other fixings, Costco members came down to the Willow Hall to the dinner today, served hand by hand, and stayed to clean up. Amazing. And they called us. We didn't call. Costco reached out to the city and said, can we help? And we put them to work, that's for sure. St. Mark's Lutheran Church, Bay North Church had a smoker as long as this building, it seems like. They smoked 65 turkeys at one time. What's, so anytime Bay North is giving a picnic, show up. It was delicious. Police and Fire always there for us, always present and accounted for. Thank you so much. You know, the city of Fairfield, in fact, I'm going to ask, can we, can we, can we just give this city a round of applause because they showed up in so many ways. City of Fairfield, thank y'all. Thank you. Thank you so much. Mission Samoa, Liberty Church, Grace Episcopal, Mission Samoa, Travis Air Force Base came, showed up. The spouses of the Air Force men and women made special treats, came and served everyone this afternoon. Love Community Church, the Solano County Black Chamber of Commerce was there helping every step of the way. Don Greavy and the Father's House. And we had more food, and this was the good stuff. I mean, we had more food than we could, than we could feed folks. We ran out of seats, but we didn't run out of food. So, it was standing room only. We had brand-new mittens, brand-new socks, brand-new coats, hygiene kits. So, this is a great way to, to, to start the holiday season by giving. And, and thank you all for everything that you have done to help us get it done, not just now, but in days to come and days past. So, Madam Mayor, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pandora?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So, this past Thursday, we had the Capsolano, so that's our regional homeless committee that myself and Councilwoman Vocaro sit on. And so, I just wanted to give the community a couple of updates on that meeting. We had a presentation on the Homeless Management Information System, so the HMIS system. So, we're getting a new system for that. And what that is, is when, when somebody comes in needing services, they get entered into the system. So, everything is in one, in one pot. So, it's not just all these different silos. It's everything kind of coordinated in one area, which is really helpful. And this, there's a new system being put in place which will allow us to expand our network with regards to information that we're gathering from all these individuals. And also, we had a, an update on the point-in-time count. And I know we'll be getting a presentation in a little bit with regards to the point-in-time count. And we are looking for volunteers, and Sam will be speaking more to that in a little bit. And we also got a presentation on current funding opportunities. So, as a board, we asked the staff to present to us upcoming grant opportunities that we could take advantage of. So, they presented us with a couple of grant opportunities, and we gave them direction as to how we wanted to go with those as well. And then, with regards to, and other updates, I gave the update with regards to, I know at our last, one of our last council meetings, we approved being in favor of having staffing and supporting staffing for the Capsolano. And so, the city managers, managers group have met, and they are preparing an MOU to present the cost sharing with regards to the staffing for the Capsolano. So, they're hoping to have something by January. And also, they're reaching out to Senator Dodd and Assemblymember Wilson to also see if they have any extra funds that they could help us with regards to the staffing situation. And then, I attended, the last time we, second to last time we met, I was talking about the North Texas Business Street Association, and they were going to have a business watch. So, I attended that. And I just wanted to share and say thank you to Fairfield PD that were there to answer the questions of our business owners, our North Texas. They all had really great feedback. They all were saying how they see things are different, and they, and they just gave really positive feedback to, to our officers, which was really great to hear. And then, we just had a regular meeting this last week. And the big thing that meeting was that they're going to do a street banner campaign. So, you know how downtown, we have those, I think right now, they have like, they're, it's a Christmas or holiday banner. And so, on North Texas, they're going to start highlighting the local businesses on North Texas. So, that should be coming soon. It's really exciting because we've never done anything on North Texas like that. And so, it's really great for the local businesses on that street to be able to promote themselves and their business. Because a lot of them, as you all know, don't face the street. Some of them are kind of hidden in the back. So, it's a great opportunity for them to kind of showcase what they do and where they're located on North Texas. And happy Thanksgiving. That's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vocaro?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody who's here and who's watching on TV. You know, I did attend the Red Kettle event. I see Monty Hoover back there. I was actually sitting with him also and some other people. The Salvation Army puts on, and it's always a great event because people that, you know, they actually had some people speaking about what the CROC Center has done for them. And it was just so happened that one family, the father was actually a former student of mine with his kids. And it was really kind of nice to see him be so thankful, you know, for what he did get and what his family and his children had. You know, the only, the other thing I just wanted to say real quickly, there were a lot of really kind words about our, our, our late mayor, Harry Price. You know, Harry and I had a special bond because we were both lifelong educators. And whenever, you know, I had a rough day when I was still working before I retired, Harry always knew it. He always knew that, he goes, must've been a rough day in, in, at school today. I go, well, yeah, it sure was. And then, he would always listen, and he would give me advice because that's who Harry was. He was, he wasn't only our mayor, or my, our, my, our mayor, my mayor, but he was a mentor and a friend. And I knew when things got tough, you know, on my job or at school, I could always go to him and talk to him. So, I'm really, I'm so happy that we were able to honor him tonight with, with the, the plaque. It was beautiful out there, and everybody who said such nice things. I mean, you can't say enough nice things about someone like Harry. And we all miss him. And Harry, if you're listening, I don't have any problems today because I'm retired from school, but that's okay. But, but thank you for all the advice you gave me in the past. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Tonnison?
I'll be very brief, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that Saturday is Shop Small Saturday. All the downtown businesses will be open and ready for, ready for business. So, if you can, stop by. It's going to be all day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you. Thank you all for coming here. So, a few things. I also attended the Veterans Day Parade, and it was wonderful. Not only do we get to celebrate our veterans, but I came to the realization for the first time that I really love parades and being a part of them. And I tell you, I was walking past the library toward, I guess, Harry Price Drive now, and had a flood of memories. And one of them was of, well, I would stand right at the beginning of the parade, and I would watch the elected officials get up on, on trucks. And so, I remembered, I had this, this memory of you, Rick, getting up on the truck and, and also watching Mayor Harry Price walking down with someone. And he made a point to stop and walk over to me. And he said, Attorney Williams, Attorney Williams. And then, he introduced me to everybody that he was with. It was like he was with a group, and he introduced them to, to me all. And it just made me think of, you know, what other young people are, are, are people my age, 53, that are sitting on the sidelines and looking and thinking, you know, I want to serve people. And I'll be getting up on, you know, on the fire truck. So, I just had that flood of memories and flood of memories of, of being with now Assemblymember Lori Wilson. She would have her own fire truck, and she would let me get on there. So, I just had this beautiful flood of memories and thinking of him on Veterans Day. So, finally, I wanted to say that, you know, Thanksgiving is not easy for everyone. My dad died 10 years ago on Thanksgiving. And so, sometimes I'm struggling. Sometimes I'm struggling. So, the thing that picks me up is I think about what I'm grateful for, that I'm honestly just, makes my heart pound, I'm grateful for. And that will pull me out of like, the, the worst moods. And so, I was thinking about it this morning and thinking about what I was grateful for. And it is all of you. It is the citizens of Fairfield. It is the city staff. And when I meet you all, whether you know who I am or not, like, I could just tell that you have like this love and passion for your jobs. It's all of you. Sometimes, I remember I've sat there at that row, and I was like, looking at you guys, you know, during city council meetings. And the fact that I get to sit up here with you all and think about the city's business and make decisions with all of you. I'm grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. We're grateful for you being here, too. So, thank you. Speaking of grateful, I got to tell you that I am not going to cook for Thanksgiving because today I was at the meal and with the 450 others. And I didn't sit down and have a big meal, but when I was leaving, Pastor Morris, who had the big smoker out there, said, do you want something, Mayor? I go, oh, well, yeah, how about a wing? And so, he went off and gave me a wing, and I sat out there eating it with grease coming down my face. And somebody said, can we get a picture with you, Mayor? And I was like, yeah. But then, I thought, I need to call my family and tell them to come on down here because I cannot do better with a turkey. That was fabulous. And I loved being able to offer the prayer today. And I just, I'm not going to give a big report because I could be going on for hours, and I don't want to keep us. But I just want to, to read this one little paragraph from George Washington's Thanksgiving Proclamation. Obviously, he was the first president of the United States. And a lot of times, we talk about the separation of church and state. But what he reminded us of was God. And so, I want to just read this as my report. It's very short. I'm, I'm not going to read the whole proclamation. Whereas, "It is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to implore His protection and His favor." Thanksgiving Proclamation, the 3rd of October, 1789. I hope you all have a blessed, blessed Thanksgiving. And Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, I was absent from our last city council meeting. And I was fortunate to have the opportunity to represent the city of Fairfield and the community at the Association of Defense Communities Installation Innovation Conference. This is a national organization that focuses on really lobbying and connecting communities around the country that have military installations, either in their, in their, in their communities or adjacent to their communities. And they get together frequently at conferences and share best practices and ideas. I was there along with Sandy Person from the Travis Community Consortium, Joe Dingman, the Executive Director out of Travis Air Force Base, and Jordan Demerall from the Fairfield Sassoon Sewer District. And we were there because we were asked to attend because we are setting a national model on how communities partner together to explore resiliency of not just their communities, but of the military installations that those communities serve. And the DOD, Department of Defense, is taking notice of how we are collaborating amongst all of the jurisdictions here in Solano County to really pay close attention to the resiliency of our infrastructure. And the DOD recognizes that the resiliency of Travis Air Force Base is only as good as the infrastructure that all of the surrounding communities have that serves Travis Air Force Base. And so, it was, it was, I'm really proud of the fact that, you know, in, in alignment with council goals and your priorities, we really are demonstrating organizational excellence. We're, we're leading regionally and being recognized for that. So, I am thankful for that, and I'm thankful for this opportunity to be here and serve Fairfield. And that is my remarks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I, he's being very humble here because he always is. But let me just say that he was the biggest part of that, that he just talked about, and helped put together a grant. It is amazing. It is amazing what this city manager has done to not only protect Travis Air Force Base, but to make us even stronger partners. And we're blessed to have him, too. So, don't, don't take this too far because you're not getting a raise, but, but I'm thankful for you.
I would advise against it. We have some financial headwind.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you. Need to make a report out from closed session from a couple of months ago in the matter of Calvin Rush and Jamie Rush versus City of Fairfield. Officer Zachary Sandoval and Dustin Joseph filed in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of California as case number 21-CV-01120. The city of Fairfield entered into a settlement amount in the amount of $210,000 in return for dismissal of the case. Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, do you have anything to report this evening?
I just have a few announcements. Just a reminder, last day for, tomorrow will be the last day for a few of our current openings for committees. We have the Gulf Advisory Board. We have three seats. We're more focused on getting actually folks from Paradise Valley to apply. That is due tomorrow at 5:00 PM. We also have the Solano County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees, also due tomorrow at 5:00 PM. And of course, we always are welcome to take more youth commissioners. And I just want to tackle on from what Scott just mentioned about Small Business Saturday. It is this Saturday on November 25th. City is partnering with BossCon to celebrate Small Business Saturday. It's the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and it's just a day for everybody to support local businesses, providing vibrant communities. The event's going to be from 12:00 to 5:00 PM. So, I hope everybody come downtown and support local. And that's my announcement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go ahead and turn to presentations now, if you would mind.
Item number two, Homeless Services Division update on Shelter Homeless Point-in-Time Count. And our presenter is Samantha Burles.
Turn this on. There it is. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. So, this evening, I'm just going to give a brief overview of where we are with council goals, but mostly just focusing on bringing back the presentation with the point-in-time count. Back in October, city manager mentioned that we would come back and present on this. Just through update on our goals, we have three main goals for this year. One is developing a street outreach. We are still working very closely with the county on increasing street medicine and general outreach services. The county has gone into contract with a nonprofit provider. That contract does go into effect in December 1st, but it is going to take them a while to get an office and get geared up within the county. They are a new provider. It's a boat services coming into the county. But we should start seeing, you know, probably some presence in, after the new year with some street outreach coming in. And we hope to work on expanding that in their presence. So, it's more to come on that particular goal. The other is converting Shelter Solano into a navigation center. They have already switched their name to Beck Avenue Navigation Center or Bank. They are providing the wraparound services already on-site. As y'all know, they have expanded their kitchen. So, they are outfitted to feed up to 130 individuals once they have the staffing in place and the deferred maintenance is completed to increase their capacity. So, we are still working with them on that, but they are getting closer with the kitchen being done. And then, lastly, increasing shelter beds. So, as you all know, Mission Samoa Pallet Shelter opened, which increased, that was an additional 18 beds. Bank Street, we are supporting 25 beds now through the city of Fairfield. And we are in the process of publishing an RFP. We're hoping to have that out in the January for pallet shelter 2.0. My last slide. Sorry. Go back. Slide 2 didn't. Oh, okay. One of my slides is disappearing. One of my other slides, which is now missing, is I did want to let you know, starting tomorrow, our winter emergency shelter will be starting. We are in contract with Bay North. So, when there is severe weather, they will open up to provide a warming space. I don't see any severe weather projected this week. It actually looks like it's going to be quite nice for Thanksgiving. But we, we have an email blast that will go out to the providers and the team and everyone when they are activating that. And that'll go through March, again, pending on the weather. Okay. And then, the main reason why we wanted to be here is to talk about the pit count. And Becky Ferris is here from Capsolano as well. So, if there's questions for her, she is here to answer that as well. So, the point-in-time count is the number of persons who are observed either literally on the street or residing in an emergency shelter bed on a specific night. This is mandated to be completed at least every other year. This is a HUD mandate, and it is tied very tightly to funding that comes within to the community. Solano County has decided to do ours the morning of January the 31st. Why is this important? So, it's essential in our efforts to ending homelessness. It measures our progress in decreasing homelessness. It increases public awareness and advocates for additional resources. It informs programs, policy, funding, regional systems designed. And it's super, super critical for bringing in funding for the county and city to support homeless services. We know it's not 100% accurate count, but it's what the federal government looks at when they make their decision-making. So, how do we do it? So, for the unsheltered, volunteers are going to canvass by foot out on the streets to where people are living in places that are not meant for habitation. So, vehicles, the streets, parks, abandoned buildings, they're, where they're known typically to stay. So, we will go there and collect surveys. We'll be visually counting how many people we see. And then, those that are willing to share and answer additional questions, there'll be a survey. And then, we also count our sheltered. And that's a report that is provided by the shelter providers on who stayed in that particular shelter in any given night. Just for comparison information for you, these are the 2022 numbers. So, we had 427 reported in the city of Fairfield. We do know that those numbers are a lot higher. And you can see, we have a much higher sheltered population than other communities because we do provide shelter spaces within our community. And then, this is just a comparison to how Solano ranks in numbers from the last three pit counts in regards to our other surrounding counties. And how can we help? So, you can register to go out and help us in the morning of January the 31st. We are looking for individuals to register. They do want at least 200 people county-wide. I'm aiming to hopefully get at least 75 for the city of Fairfield because I know we have quite the landmass to cover and a lot of encampments to go to. You can sign up on the website there, or that QR code will get you there. I also gave all of you a stack of flyers, so please hand those out to your groups and your events if you need more. You know where to find us to get more. We will gladly print you out more. It's also been shared on all of our social medias as of yesterday. So, please definitely share that out through your media pages. The more awareness we get out there, the more volunteers we are going to get, and it'll get us more of a more accurate count. If our numbers go up, I don't see that as a failure. I see that as getting a more representative count of what it actually is looking like out there. And hopefully, we will get a bigger slice of the pie. There's only so much pie, right? And we are not pulling in our slice of the pie as, as we know, right? And, oh, the last piece is when you do register to volunteer, you can go in and help us pinpoint where you see individuals residing on the streets. So, once you register, they'll let, you'll be able to go in there and set pins for us. And so, when I'm setting up the teams regionally, I can disperse folks to those particular locations. I've already been going in as I'm seeing items and folks out there and, or I get phone calls about folks out there camping. It's, all, all of that helps so very much to spread the word. And then, any questions? Or any questions for Becky? I can bring her up if there's questions.
Councilwoman Vocaro?
Thanks, Taylor. Thank you for the presentation. Question about Shelter Solano? How many, how many are there right now?
Based off of the presentation they gave, they have about 81 individuals. They're only funded for 73 beds at this time, though.
At this time?
But they had some funding, I guess, that they lost. I don't know what particular funding source that was. But they didn't kick, of course, those individuals out. So, they do have a few folks that are there, that are still there that aren't funded.
Right. Because, because with the kitchen, I mean, the numbers are supposed to go up to about 130? Am I right?
It increases their capacity to be able to feed up to 130 individuals. They still have a shortfall in regards to funding to have the staffing capacity to assist that many individuals. So, I know they're working on that.
They are? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams, please.
Hi, Sam. So, just clarification. So, Shelter Solano into a navigation center?
Yes.
Does that mean it's, it's now an open site?
No, it is not an open location. They are not doing drop-in services there. What it means is that rather than just being a brick and mortar where people are sleeping, they're providing wraparound services. So, they have case management. They have housing navigation, employment readiness, part of some of the maintenance that they're doing. You know, they're building the training kitchen, and they'll have chefs come in and train folks on different job skills there on-site. So, it just means more intensive wraparound services on, on-site and more low barrier compared to what the standard typical emergency shelter is.
Got it. So, if you're not being housed there, though?
No.
Then you're not being serviced at all?
No. That's why we're, we're also trying to increase outreach services within the community.
Okay. And it's Okay. And is it still run by Shelter Solano or has there just been a name change?
So it's run by Shelter Inc. So Shelter Inc. is the name of the agency. Shelter Solano was their original name for the site and they have changed their name to the Beck Avenue Navigation Center.
And is it open, will it, are they a provider which will go back out to an RFP at some point?
Are you talking about who runs the building?
Mm-hmm.
I believe they're in contract to continue to run that facility unless there's any sort of violation.
Yeah, there's no specific contract for them to provide the services at the facility. We, the city of Fairfield, have the master lease on the property and then in 2018, a competitive process was done and they were provided with a sublease to basically manage the property and provide all the services at the property. So as Samantha was touching on, they have certain guidelines in terms of their performance and unless there's any violations of those operations, then effectively in perpetuity, they have the sublease on the property. Now, in terms of the overall concept of the navigation center and sort of to the question that I think Councilman Vaccaro was asking, they have provided us a proposal or I forget, it wasn't quite a proposal, but basically it was kind of an overview of the services and then, you know, an operating budget of what would be required in order for them to start operating the property at the full capacity of the 130 participants. And so we're sort of working through that. We meet with them. I forget if it's this week or early next week. And we'll be talking about that and starting to cover that. And ultimately, I think the big part of the lift here that's going to be needed is right now, there's, you know, nine or 10 funders for the shelter, which isn't necessarily uncommon except for the way that those contracts are set up. Like the city of Fairfield, we have two separate agreements where we're paying for a set number of beds, access to a number of beds. And each public agency that participates with them is paying for a set number of beds. So you sort of have, you know, this diversified funding stream and everyone's reserving their access to certain beds. And on given nights, while I think that Shelter Inc. does their best to manage that, if, you know, one community that's paying for access to beds has five beds empty, there's a possibility that others may not be getting access. Again, they do a good job of trying to balance that, but that's kind of the dynamic that's not as efficient. And Councilman Vaccaro had brought that up at Capsolano and asked for a presentation on that. So Mr. Extron, the executive director, CEO, he did come to Capsolano and gave a presentation and an update. And I think there's broad consensus that the current sort of multi-contract funding structure needs to be consolidated down into one, you know, one master agreement that everybody's funding through. Most likely, the appropriate place for that in terms of that sort of countywide oversight would be Capsolano. That's kind of the function of that organization. But as Councilwoman Pandora mentioned, right now Capsolano has no staff. They have no dedicated staff except for they contract with us for one administrative assistant position. The county is providing them in-kind services for one management analyst that's sort of doing all of the oversight. They're contracting with a private company, a law firm that's providing a lot of staffing services, administrative functions. So it's sort of this collective effort of a lot of in-kind services. Vacaville does all of the fiscal agent portions of it. And so it's, again, it's this very diversified and the concept is to get Capsolano, you know, all have their own staff that will be technically, they'll be county employees, but then the county will contract them to Capsolano so that those FTEs are just dedicated to the work that Capsolano is doing. At that point in time, once they're ramped up, then you could have sort of this consolidated contract for funding the operations now fall under one umbrella organization that's the central point of oversight for the operations as opposed to right now having multiple jurisdictions, multiple contracts, where it's just not quite as efficient as it could be.
Thank you for that. So a contract in perpetuity, how does that happen?
I don't know how that happens. That was in, I think, 2018 when that, you know, sublease structure was created. And that is something that we've looked into, but ultimately, I wasn't here at the time, not passing off, but just I legitimately don't know how that exactly came to be where it was this in perpetuity structure.
But the city, I mean, we still have the authority, though, correct, to if that organization is not doing what they're supposed to be doing, the city has the authority to say, okay, not to supply funds or not to, am I correct?
Yeah, if there's a violation of their management guidelines that's clear, then yes, then there's some authority or we have the perstring authority as well.
Right, right.
So my, oh, my head.
Continue, yes.
My next group of questions is about the pit count. So just to let you know where I'm coming from. When we were doing the census, there was kind of a point in time count because every census count mattered. So there was a huge initiative and part of that was touching base with all of the service providers that worked with our unhoused community. And the numbers were, and I was one of the people that was up all night. I helped with the strategy, da-da-da, and the numbers were double that of these counts. And all the service providers knew these numbers were terribly off. So I appreciate you coming out and informing the community what is happening, the call for volunteers. You're going to feed people, right?
We're going to hopefully have some snacks in the morning. Yeah, we're working on it.
Very good. You got to make it fun. But I want to be assured that the strategy, the strategy has not been right because these numbers are not right. They're not. What is happening differently this time? And I know you just came, but...
I'll bring Becky up since she is managing that project in the Capsolano side of things.
Thanks for bringing her.
Hi, I'm Becky Ferris. So one of the things that's happening different is that Capsolano has brought me on as a project manager specifically for the pit count. In the past, you've had to rely on resources from whoever in whichever city had the bandwidth to be able to help with the pit count. Now, we've brought in leads, pit leads for each jurisdiction. Samantha's one of them. And so that's where we'll break it down a little bit more. But as far as what's going to be different, what's going to help it be more accurate? That's why I was brought on. And it's to be able to manage it and make sure that we're getting out where we need to get out and we have sufficient resources to do that.
You tapping into the service providers, homeless, unhoused service providers?
Yes.
In every city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Tonnison? Are you, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williams, are you finished? Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Tonnison?
Thank you, Sam. I just had some point in time questions. So you go out in groups, is that?
Yes.
And then how do you avoid double counts?
You'll, everyone will be assigned a jurisdictional area, so they'll have their area that they go into. And that's why it's specifically just that period of time to avoid that duplication. So there'll be teams. Once I have all the volunteers in, we get to assign folks into teams. So whether it's a group that's already coming in, wanting to do it together, a faith-based organization, an agency, you know, a local business, and they'll be assigned territory within the community to go.
And will they go under bridges? Any PDS court?
There will be PD involved, yes. I actually have my monthly meeting with the hit team next week and I plan to bring it up and talk to them about it.
And then when they're gathering this information, do we have a spot where business owners or other folks can go to on a website and say, hey, there's a bunch of, you know, homeless individuals here or here or here? Is there a site on our web? Is there a place on our website where people can report and then you keep a running tally of that?
So I've actually been doing that. So when you, so also through the volunteer portal, when you register, there's a way in there to go and pin locations. And so when I've been getting phone calls, like I had one just yesterday, I asked, how many people are there? What's the address? And so then I went in and added it myself.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Pandora?
Thanks, Sam, for the presentation. So where can someone go if they're having issues with getting registered? Because I'm already having issues. Okay, thank you. So, but if the public?
Information is on the flyer.
Okay.
Yeah.
For issues, oh?
Yeah, both of our contact information.
Oh, for Becky. So if anyone has issues with the app to contact Becky, okay, perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
Anything else? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay, and so now we're going to move on to public comments.
Public comments. Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting. The council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public. Ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting or place a matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. And our first speaker is Bijon Hughes, followed by Matthew Bedu.
Hello, everybody, and thank you guys for your service. I appreciate you guys. Okay, basically what I'm here for today is I've actually met you in our neighborhood at Joyce Orange House.
Yes, I remember.
Yes, and so that's basically what I'm here for. Basically, in our area now, four doors from where she was at, there's been a new Airbnb put into our home, in our area. It's ridiculous. I mean, it's been a horrible situation for us. We're a new community and we have families, children, and I've actually, you know, emailed half of my other people here, support. Some of the people, actually, the kids, the parents are saying, we no longer let our kids out anymore. I mean, it's ridiculous. It's only been existence for a month and a half and now we feel captive in our own home communities. I used to come home relaxed and, you know, from work and everything. Now I have anxiety because I'm not sure what's going to happen. We have people blocking our driveways, throwing litter and stuff out the window. Cars coming in and out of the area all times of the night, three, four, five o'clock in the morning. It's been, it's been a really, really bad situation as far as, and then as far as the bylaws for Airbnb, they're telling us that there's only supposed to be 16 people at the most in our house, but we've already seen, you know, 20, 30 people coming and going, all, like I said, off and on at different times of the day and night. I mean, so I'm here basically hoping that I can get some help, I mean, relief. I don't know. I've been given different information. I've been told that it's illegal to have Airbnb in Fairfield and then I was told that it's not by code enforcement. So I'm just trying to find out. And I would like to ask any of you guys, how would you like to have someone move into your area and not know who they are? With Megan's Law, at least you're knowing if your neighbor is a sex offender. I don't know who my neighbor is now. You know, we got different people coming in at all times and not knowing. So that's basically why I'm here.
City manager's going to answer or talk to you?
Yeah, what I would ask you to do is our police chief's right back there in the back, Chief Marshall.
Okay.
If you want to step out into the foyer, he's happy to get your information and he'll chat with you and then we'll get you the services. Get you the assistance you need.
Again, thank you guys and happy Thanksgiving.
Good seeing you again. Happy Thanksgiving.
Our next speaker is Matthew Bedu, followed by Maria Faroah.
Faroah? I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me, and happy Thanksgiving. I'm here as an individual and I am not speaking for the Travis Unified School District Board. Three quick things. I would like to thank the city manager for taking the lead on jumpstarting a much-needed after-school program in the area of Travis Unified Schools in the city of Fairfield. It started months ago with parents coming to us and we reached out to the city manager. When the city manager a couple of weeks ago announced the funding was in place, that was huge. I know that both staffs now, because of the city manager's actions, are discussing and working out all the details. I tell our, I get asked a lot by the parents. I tell our parents, in my opinion, the old word, coming soon. I know without a doubt we will meet the minimum. We were talking about 25. I think you're going to have a waiting list a mile long. So again, thank you very much. The second thing, I kind of hate second and third-hand info. You know, when people don't know what they're talking about, so I just want to put a little clarity to this. I want to assure everyone sitting on this dais, our door-to-door program collecting support does not and will not, and no one is speaking negative about the city of Fairfield. We are collecting names and emails. We let the residents know. We are not asking for any funds and we're not asking them to attend any events. Just simply back us up on social media as we use it as a tool to promote the construction of Markley Lane. Just the three neighborhoods that I talked about two weeks ago and will be done here pretty quick. We got about 3,000. So, you know, nobody can fault us. We have to educate the people on what we know and what's, and get them to help us promote it and that's the tool that we're doing. But nobody's saying Fairfield didn't do this, Fairfield, that's not where, when I started this and my first appearance was at the STA, I told all those mayors up there, we're not going negative and we're not going negative now either. Real quick, I know we have a few seconds. This was dropped in my lap. I didn't ask for it. David has a copy of it. I'd like to leave a copy for everyone here. These were done by the same architects and all the people in that business that did the overpass on Peabody and everything. And a couple, two of them live in Whitney Neighborhood. So that's what generated this. I know.
What time is that?
Thank you. I'll leave these here.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anna Potero, followed by Jeff Trager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. When I came here this evening to celebrate Mayor Price, I was reminded of a quotation by Mayor Maya Angelou who said that, that people may not remember what you did, people might not remember what you said, but they remember how you make them feel. I had only known Mayor Price for about seven years and he always made me feel valued and I hope his family felt how much love and respect we as a community had for him. On the speaker of Thanksgiving, I wanted to come and thank our city for being so proactive. Five years ago, we started an adoptive street program, which I'm so proud of. And I remember we had 47 streets to be adopted and now 50 streets have been adopted. And just to give you some frame of reference, the little street that my group and I adopted, it took us eight months and 40 bags to just pick up, just like about 100 yards. Now, five years later, it takes one hour and two bags. So they were saving the city money and I really wanted to thank our city for being proactive in our dedication to climate change in supporting our adoptive street program. That, so soon, city has started an adoptive street program. They started about last year. I attended their city council meeting last month to thank them for doing that and I volunteered to help them start it because we can do it. We did it here, we can do it there. I also wanted to thank, on this week of Thanksgiving, a special thanks to Councilmember Tonnison. I want to thank him for always showing up at our little HOA meetings and lending a listening ear and being so supportive of us all. Every time we have a little community event, he's there and he's there to listen. And I want to thank you all so much for your service. And for our plea peace officers, Mayor Dan Marshall, you're amazing. To our firefighters, thank you all for your service and for your families for sharing. for sharing with us. Thank you, sir, for all you're doing for our city. Your generation is making a difference, and looking forward to what city Fairfield is going to look like in the next 20 years that I live here. So, thank you all so much, and thank you, sir. I really appreciate you.
Our next speaker is Jeff Trager.
Real, real quick, before Jeff jumps up, Esther, Esther, did, um, did the one speaker pull the card? Yeah, okay, no problem.
She rescinded her card, yeah.
Uh, Mrs. Mayor, uh, members of the city council, um, we have a very special event coming on, up, uh, on the 2nd of December, the world-famous Vowena Children's Choir out of, uh, Benicia. Um, they have, they've been teaching kids since 1994, ages five to 18. Uh, it's, um, uh, quite a, uh, quite a, a group that they've been doing. They've been to the White House twice, um, and they had a soloist, Holly Stell, out of Vacaville. If you remember Holly Stell, she was a soloist at Matt Garcia's service over there. Uh, just fantastic. She, they've done a, a lot of wonderful things. They've gone to South Africa. They were the first, uh, group, uh, solo, uh, excuse me, uh, choral group ever allowed into, uh, South Africa. They performed at the Olympic claim, uh, games in 2012, Abu Dhabi, uh, the Grand Ole Opera, and, uh, that's again, on the 2nd of, uh, December. And you can get your tickets by going to F T presents dot com or downtowntheater.com. And, um, that's what's going on. There was one other thing I wanted to mention. Um, oh, yeah, I just got back from, uh, Austin, Texas. What a strange place that is.
[laughing]
Everybody walking around there with cowboy boots and guns and, but I, one thing I noticed was, uh, a lot of their, uh, a lot of their, uh, businesses, uh, restaurants had entertainment, and it was always filled. And I'm going to bring that up and have a discussion about that, because it was really something to see. A little muggy, and I'm happy to be home.
[laughing]
But, uh, anyway, very, very interesting. So that's what's happening, uh, at the Downtown Theater.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And I have no more common cards. I don't have any hands raised online. Are there anyone else that would like to speak tonight?
All right, then we'll, um, go ahead. To the consent calendar, then, Madam Clerk?
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that a separate action be taken on a specific item.
All right, and do we have any public speakers?
Um, I have no cards and no hands raised online. Anybody here that would like to speak on the consent calendar?
So moved, and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Um, then we're going to move on to new business. Item 10, please.
Um, item 10, minute action approving mayor's appointments to the Measure P Oversight Committee, Rockville Hills Regional Park Citizen Advisory Committee, and Youth Commission. Sorry, before, I gotta always pull what Karen does. I'm all ready for the oath. So I have to wait for city council approval before I do that.
Okay, so let's go ahead and, um, can all entertain a motion-
Second.
-to approve these-
Sorry.
So moved.
Madam Mayor, do you want to ask for any public comments?
Do we have any public comments on this first? Uh, it looks like not, nothing online? Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous.
Um, may I have, um, the folks that are being sworn in tonight to come up? Um, I have, let's see, let me put all their names out. Nicole Ballman for, um, Measure P, um, Steve Vancel for his reappointment for Measure P, and then I have James Carr for the Landscape Oversight Committee. Wait, not Landscape, sorry, I take that back. He isn't on that committee. The Rockville Hills Regional Park Advisor Committee. And then I also have two youth commissioners, Sebastian Tor- Bear with me if I mispronounce your name, Sebastian Torchi, and Michaela Brito. Okay, I'm going to swear you all in, and you're going to just repeat after me. So may I have everybody raise their right hand? I state your name. Do solemnly swear-
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States-
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance-
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely-
Take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully-
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Yay!
I'm going to have you, um, have you all come here and sign your oaths real quick, and then we'll hopefully get, take a quick group photo.
All right, we're going to move on to item 11.
Item 11, Measure P Oversight Committee Annual Report, presented by Steve Vancel, our Vice Chair for Measure, the Measure P Committee.
Uh, we're going to talk about Measure P this evening. Uh, we have a wonderful committee, and every year we do prepare an annual report, so this is the report from Measure P. Uh, we do have a great group of people. Uh, we just, uh, recently said goodbye to our longtime Chair, Chris Matthews. He continues to serve on the, uh, Planning Commission for the city. Uh, we also have with us Tara Martin. She's with us on the committee. She's here tonight, if you raise your hand. And Nicole just got sworn in, so she's here. And two members who are not here, Eddie Ramirez and Tim Tomko. So five people in a great group. We want to thank also for preparing this report with the, the Finance Department, the City Clerk's Office. They helped a lot gathering the data, and many of the city departments also gave us a great assistance with the report. But we'll start with, uh, the report here. Let's see. So what is Measure P? So everybody knows what the, the long-term traditional tax is. This, the state of California collects it, and they give us back to the city about 1% of the, of the sales tax. So Measure P is a locally controlled additional 1% of sales tax that comes into us in the city. It was approved by the voters in 2012, and re-approved and extended in 2016. Uh, that made it a 20-year, um, total plan. So revenue began in, uh, 2013, and it will currently sunset in March of 2033, unless extended by the voters. Uh, below, what you see up there is the actual language from the ballot measure, and we use this as guidance for our Measure P Committee. Uh, it talks about supporting, uh, neighborhood police patrols, firefighting, rapid 9/11 response, crime prevention for public works, fixing potholes and neighborhood streets, parks and recreation, with some emphasis on youth and senior services and other general services. It also talks about mandatory audits, which we do every year. We, we make sure that an audit is done, we review that, uh, and also independent oversight, which is part of this report. So let's take a look at the big picture this year for Measure P. Um, and of course, it runs from, uh, July through June, so July of 2022 through, uh, the end of June in 2023. Our total revenue this year was almost 26 million for Measure P. Uh, it was slightly less than last year. Last year, we had a good bump up, partly because of inflation. Uh, inflation made the cost of sales higher, so the, uh, the tax coming in was a little higher. Of course, that has a double-edged effect for our expenses in the city, that our expenses are also higher. Uh, this year, it was slightly less. Um, it was actually trending up a little bit the beginning part, but down a little bit the last part, which maybe implies the economy is weakening very slightly here. Uh, inflation was moderate compared to what it was last year, but it's still about 3.3% of an increase. Uh, so we do have, as I mentioned, uh, there's a couple kinds of sales taxes we have. Measure P was 45.3% of all the sales tax revenue that came into the city, so it's fairly substantial. Again, that's from our 1% rate for Measure P. The other sales taxes basically have two components. The 1% traditional tax plus a growing part of our sales tax now is internet sales. Fair, uh, Fairfield gets our fair share of the internet sales that are made online. Uh, and that's actually, uh, calculated for us by our other sales tax. So the more local sales tax we have, the more internet sales tax we get. So that's another, um, reason to shop, shop local, to shop small, as we have coming up. Uh, so, uh, shopping here in, in Fairfield actually helps us get more internet sales tax too. Uh, of all the general fund revenue, the entire general fund also includes, uh, city share of property tax and several fees that come in. Uh, Measure P was almost 20% of the general fund revenue, and that's what it's been fairly consistently over the years since it started. It, it measures, occasionally to go over 20%, sometimes maybe down around 17, 18, but it's usually just almost right around 1/5 of all of our general fund revenue. Again, we, I talked about the ballot measure. We, so we look at, um, the departments in the city that address that, and for public safety, it was the Police Department, for Fire Services, uh, the Fire Department, and then Public Works, actually, it was covered in two areas. Uh, of course, obviously, the streets and roads, but they're also responsible for parks and recreation maintenance. So with a broken out in a second category here, and then park and, parks and recreation themselves. We consider this to be quality of life improvements. And as you can see, the, uh, parks and recreation goes from, from largest to, from smallest to largest. Uh, parks and recreation is the smallest amount, and that kind of matches the overall city budget. The Police Department gets the most of Measure P, uh, funds, again, matching the, the, the overall, uh, city budget. Um, in the past two years, we've actually generated a, a, an individual Measure P budget. We now have software that can do that. Um, but I want to remind you that a Measure P is a, it's a general fund dollar, so a general fund dollar is a general fund dollar. So it can be, it can be moved around. Obviously, the, the, the city staff and the city council, you folks finally decide where the money is spent. But we do generate a Measure P department, uh, a budget by department. So let's look at some of those departments now. Um, again, the largest is the Police Department, so our budget that we, uh, we put together, and the details are actually in our, in your annual report, if you want to see how it's, uh, the dollars amount signed to it. But we say that Measure P funds 35 of our police officers. Uh, it funds our crime prevention unit. It funds our homeless intervention team, and that's a success story under Measure P. It started initially with just two, two people, but we're now up to, to five officers on the, uh, hit team, along with a supervisor and also a social worker. So that's doing a lot to help us with the homeless situation. Uh, this past year, they had 147 individuals that they were able to place into shelter. We saw some of those statistics earlier with the presentation. Uh, we actually in Fairfield have a lot of our people in shelter. It also funds six dispatchers, and for both police and dispatchers, that's about 28% of the total force. Um, Measure P also funds part of the vehicle replacement, and also, uh, provides part of the funding for the police activities league. For the Fire Department, it funds 26 of our firefighters and engineers who actually man the fire trucks, plus one battalion chief. Uh, it also helps, uh, with some of the vehicle replacements. The Fire Department, uh, vehicles are quite expensive. Uh, some of the statistics for their work that the Fire Department's done this past year, they had over 16,000 recorded incidents or calls for service. That's a 4% increase, so they continue, uh, to increase their, uh, their workload. Uh, they, as you may know, this past year, they assumed the emergency response responsibility for Cordelia Fire Department. So that's an initial tasking they have picked up, and I know there's some ongoing negotiations to finalize what we're going to do in that regard. Uh, and they also maintain our excellent and ISO rating of two. The ratings go from 10 to 1, 1 being the best, and less than 1% of the cities in the United States have a rating of 1. So we are of a very, very excellent rating. Measure P, uh, helped this rating, it was three, uh, about two years ago, it was upgraded to one, because we increased fire prevention services and also improved fire training, and that allows us to upgrade our, our rating to two. Uh, Public Works Department, as I mentioned, they both work the streets, but they also help, uh, maintain our parks and recreation and, uh, so forth. Um, they, uh, with the street team, we have a dedicated Measure P-funded street team. So that's greatly improved the, their efforts to keep our streets up. Uh, since Measure P has started, uh, we now have almost 30 million square feet of streets that have been improved under Measure P. Uh, they're also responsible for the homeless engagement and response team, the HART, so they, they work with the homeless camps, and they had 691 camps and sites cleaned up. But the sites highlight that the HART team does more than just the homeless camps. There's a lot of illegal dumping that they, they get right on top of to keep that cleaned up, and also graffiti. So they're actually part of, uh, crime prevention as well. And they do coordinate closely with the hit team and crime prevention. Uh, with park maintenance, they're responsible for keeping our parks up, and they also run an annual seat, a seal coat program for our streets to keep maintenance on that. And then Park and Recreation is again, as I mentioned, uh, there's an emphasis on youth and seniors, so with the, uh, we put our funding, some of it to the aquatics complex to help the youth program, and you can see that, uh, over, uh, 5,000 recreation swim users and almost 1,000 swim lessons, uh, were, uh, taught in this past year. They also run the Adult Recreation Center and the Senior Day Program, and I believe that's got about 23 different programs that we have for seniors that Measure P helps fund at the Adult Recreation Center. And we just heard from the Downtown Theater, uh, we also provide funding for the Downtown Theater. Measure P funds too. One of the things we ask this year, I know we've, uh, some of the discussions, you're looking forward at the budget, and, uh, we're looking at potentially having to slow down hiring, but Measure P, as you recall- But Measure P, as you recall, was started after the Great Recession occurred, and we asked the Finance Department, they did an excellent job finding some data for us. The peak employment that we had in this city was back in 2009, before the recession, of full-time equivalent positions. Obviously, some of the positions are part-time, or some of them are part-year, but the full-time equivalent positions we had in 2009 were 609 people. As you can see, in 2013, when Measure P started, we were down to 502. We cut back dramatically on our manpower, we were forced to do so, and it cut services back. There was less people that worked the streets, less for code enforcement, less for some of the crime prevention and fire prevention programs. And that 502 figure also, I should highlight, many of the employees who stayed who were full-time, they took a 10% pay cut, by cut your hours 10%. So they were working, working less than the full 40-hour week, so we really had to cut back a lot at that time. And over these past 10 years, we're halfway through Measure P, so over these past 10 years, you can see we have very steadily and thoughtfully added back employees to, so we're now up to 619, which is 10 more than we had before. But I might point out, in those, since 2009, that's 14 years, the city has grown by 15,000 people, that's about 14% our city has grown, and we've also expanded out to the Northeast and to the Southwest, a lot, so it's a lot more territory for the Police Department, the Fire Department, and Public Works to cover. So if I would take the population and add that to the 609, we'd actually need to be about 670 with our, to have the same amount. So we're above where we were, but our need is above where we were right now. So anyway, we thought this would be maybe some helpful information for you folks as you go forward, that we have added services back, we've added employees back. Okay, and then as a summary, Measure P is about 20% of general fund, it's fully controlled by the city, so the state can't do things to take it away from us. It helped us greatly during the difficult time of the Great Recession, we had to cut back so much, we've been able to restore level of service. There's, as we look forward, and I know you folks have done this, but there are some fiscal headwinds coming, so Measure P will continue to help with that. But I guess the caution is that we are halfway through the voter-approved 20-year period, so the current sunset is March 2033 unless extended by the voters. So as we approach that time, we will obviously, you know, take a look, but it is not a permanent program. Okay. Are there any questions that you folks have?
Colleagues, questions? Councilwoman.
Thank you for this presentation. So my question is, these data, and by the way, I really love this brochure. It's so easy to, for the community to understand, for me to understand. So these data points, these are, do you track these each and every year?
Yes, we do. And the Finance Department and the city departments help us do that.
And at what point do you add more data points?
Well, as we need. One we just added was looking at the employee headcount, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilman Tonason.
No, I just thought it was a great presentation, Steve. Anything, any suggestions you would make to do anything differently, or do you like the way it's working out? And if, if you did, is that something that you would come to us with, saying I would make a suggestion that you change or that you consider?
I actually think the process is working pretty good. We do our annual reports for you to read. We have great interaction with the Finance Department, we meet every quarter, and we try, when our meetings, sometimes we do meet in city hall, we want to go out to the departments. So we may go to Public Works, we may go to the Police Department, or the Fire Department, or some of the parks, and to see on sight, you know, what, what our dollars are doing. So that process is working pretty good, and we give feedback to Finance. I think if there's major issues, probably we would, none of us would be hesitant to bring them forward, but I think so far, it's worked very well.
Well, thank you for the work that you're doing, and thank the entire committee.
Thank you.
Councilman.
Yeah, just, yeah, Steve, thanks. You know, and other people come up here and given this presentation, but I, I think your presentation, I like the details and the way you went over everything, pretty much point by point, so thanks a lot.
Councilman Pandora.
Thank you. Steve, thank you again for the presentation. So well done, and also just for your service to this and commitment to this. You know, I appreciate that you applied again to run on the committee, and when we, when Councilman Tonason and I interviewed you and others for the committee, I mean, it was a no-brainer, you, you're so dedicated, and what you bring to the table is bar none. And so I just wanted to thank you for your extraordinary service to the city of Fairfield.
Okay, well, thank you, but there are five of us, and we do have five great people serving on the committee.
I would also echo what the council has said. I know we're good with you on some other things, that you are detail-oriented, you seem to never run out of energy, so I want to talk to you about that at another time. And you keep things very relatable. I understand everything that you tell me about anything, whether it has to do with the Air Force, legislation, any of that, so I appreciate you too, on so many levels, and everybody who serves with you. You guys keep doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Item 12, Resolution 2023-277 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the fiscal year 2022-2023 preliminary results and authorizing an update to the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. And our presenter is the Director of Finance, John Furtado.
Good evening, Mayor, Wise Mayor, and members of the council. Since it's Thanksgiving week, I'm also thankful to come forth with some good news for a change.
So moved.
So before I get into my presentation, you know, council approves a budget that we present to you, but post that budget, you know, our accounting team has all the hard work of recording, controlling, going through the audit, so I would like to thank Miles Dixon, our accounting manager, for the great job in putting all the numbers together. So today, I'm going to go over the preliminary results, these are unaudited, our audit is in progress. We don't anticipate them to change, but just a precaution, we'll be bringing the full financials when it's approved by the auditors later. So I'm also going to recommend some proposed budget adjustments that you've seen in your package, and then we'll go through the reserve policy that we adopted in, or we recommended in March and was approved in the budget, and we'll go over the actions for tonight. So the good news starts with our revenues. Our revenues were 4.2 million above projection, and I'll get into the details of which items, that's 3.3%. While our revenues went up, we also had expenses go up, and I'll get into those details in a minute. So the net effect was, in our original budget, when we adopted our budget, we were projecting to use close to 2 million reserves. We're not going to do that now, in fact, we are adding 540,000, so 730, we've got some 200-odd reserved for some carryovers. Looking at the revenue side, some of the key items here, cannabis was a big item when we were going through the budget. We had dropped cannabis budget from a million to 750. Here's one of the reasons why, even though we had a million in budget, we hardly could capture 600,000 there. The next one in line here, a big one for us, almost 28%, 29% of our budget, is property taxes. Property taxes came slightly lower, 1.3%, primarily, a big amount of that was around 40 million worth of adjustments that were made for affordable housing, and a few other adjustments that came about, so a good result in the end. A big one for the city, sales tax and Measure P taxes, you just saw the Measure P report. While Measure P actually dropped a little bit, our sales tax went up pretty high by 5.6%, driven by a few new businesses, but primarily, we have a manufacturer that really outperformed and also caused an increase in expenses that I'll get to, so. And the good news there is they have, they propose that it's going to be a continuing trend, so it's going to help us with our 24 budget as well. Franchise fees, our UUT, that is the user utility taxes, went up by close to 600,000, and we have a new franchise agreement, so that bumped up our franchise revenue by almost a million. These won't repeat because we've already captured them in the coming budget. And then other taxes, primarily business license taxes went up by 300,000 because of the department, you know, enforcing, doing a lot of more enforcement. TOT was higher by 300,000 as we recovered through COVID and started really squeezing the hotels to, and auditing them to pay up, so that was a good boost. And then other taxes, like real estate transfer taxes, were higher for the year. So in general, all taxes to the city account for 86.1% of the budget. Looking at departmental revenues, a lot of this is driven from Parks and Rec and community development for the fees they charge. So mainly in our charges for services, we had a bump there from our planning and building fees, they came significantly higher. On everything else that we have, just the two points here, one is investment income was higher, obviously, higher interest rates leads to a lot more in investment income. And then the adjustment that we did in our 24-25 budget with the CFD, we were budgeting 2.5 million, which wasn't sustainable because revenues were 1.7 to 1.8, so we made a revenue correction there. So overall, other revenues were 6.1% of the budget. Now going to expenses, as I said, expenses went up over the budget by 1.6 million, and part of the reasons being, our police budget went higher by 620,000. Part of it was driven by the move of the Investigations Department and the costs associated there, and just some of their contracts and other services went up significantly with inflation, which is also adjusted in the 24 budget. And then fire, we had 2.5 million overrun, almost 9%, primarily driven by overtime because we had around 10 to 12 officers injured, some with cancer and stuff, so that, those slots had to be covered by overtime. So that led to significant amount of overtime outages there. Community development slightly over by around 310,000, but they brought in almost 750,000 more in revenue, so they need more consultants to do the work, so it's driven on both sides. Big one here is, we have a cost-sharing agreement with, for sales tax rebates, I just showed a huge increase in the sales tax, which also caused us to pay more than a million in rebates, pushing that budget above. Parks and Rec came around a million, 200 below budget, primarily, one thing is, the impacts of COVID have gone, but they've found it very difficult to hire. The inability to get enough staffing to run their programs has kind of caused them to spend less, but also get less revenue. And then with administration, that's mainly the City Manager's Office, we had budgeted for some homeless positions which were not filled during the year, so those ended up with savings. And then the two, three other departments here, minor under-budget, mainly from salary savings that we achieved during the year. And just looking at expenses by department, as you see there, our major expenses on police and fire, followed by Public Works, in line with what Measure P was showing. So 65% of what we spend is on public safety, around 14% goes to Public Works, and everybody else has got a small piece of the pie. So back in March, we talked about reserve policy allocations. Based on what we saw today, we are looking at adding around $537,000 to reserves, but the way we'll do it is different this time. 75% of what we achieve, which is 403,000 of that 537, is going to be distributed in how council had approved at that study session that we had. So 201,000 will be put in our infrastructure facilities reserve, around 121, which is 30% into pension stabilization, and 20% into a vehicle replacement. So these will be assigned reserves, at any point, council could decide to reassign them elsewhere if they wanted to. Going over a few of the other funds, our water utility funds, basically, revenues came in higher, expenses were lower, but those expenses being lower can be deceiving for some of these funds, and I'll tell you why. So mainly, a lot of cash in the water funds, which meant they had a huge amount of investment income. We did a lot more additional water connections, that was 1.2 million, and a few developer contributions. The reduction in expenses is primarily because we didn't get to some of those projects that we planned, like the pumps and others, so those expenses will come in the future years. It's not really a saving per se. So with the other funds, and the golf fund, again, we had better revenues than we projected, and also year-over-year, our expenses were a little below, again, from capital projects that we need to do. Banquet rentals were up, golf-related income was higher. However, even though we had 10,000 or so less rounds of golf, we had an 8% increase in the fees because of the model and new structure of fees that we have. And hopefully, with the touchstone, we'll achieve an even better result. Then on the transit fund, transit has always been a struggle because it's grant-funded, and also over the last two years, we lost buses and the routes, so we had to realize what you call a booking loss, which is that actual of showing a loss of 1.66, because when we moved the buses, we had to move them at a loss to the county, per se. And then with the operations, primarily, they were in line with what we were expecting, slightly lower volume, but they are grant-funded, so whatever they spend gets reimbursed. So on to the next part now, as we saw, we saw revenues go up, but expenses go higher. The expenses went higher than what actually was authorized by council. So in today's action, we also want to raise the appropriations based on what's in your staff report. So if you look at this column, what we are proposing is to raise some of the revenues in the adjusted budget, which would be the franchise taxes by 1.8, sales taxes by 1.6, and the charges for services, as well as transfers in, reduced by that 800,000 that I talked about. So we're increasing total revenues by 4.29 in the budget, and then increasing the appropriations for the Fire Department, which was the 2.5 in overtime, and then the 0.9 for the sales tax rebates, police, et cetera. And then with administration and Parks and Rec, we're reducing those budgets by the amounts that they saved. So in effect, this action would add 1.9... So in effect, this action would add one point nine nine, or two million, to the budget, so that two million and the one point nine million negative swing means now the budget also would show that it was flat, if that makes sense. So then we also have another budget adjustment that we are recommending. We have pretty significant cost overruns in our general liability with the cases that we are settling. So originally, we, we had a lot of extra money in our OPEB medical retiree fund. It was overfunded, so we proposed moving a million of that to the compensated absences fund. What we are now doing is taking half of that and putting it to general liability and increasing another two hundred thousand. So net effect is the general liability getting seven hundred thousand. And those are all in your resolutions. So the required actions today, receive the report, adopt the resolutions, approving the budget adjustments, and with that, if you're ready to take any questions you may
Madam Clerk, first of all, do we have any public comments on this?
I have no public, I have no cards for this item, and I don't have no any hands raised for this item.
Right, thank you. Any comments or questions, colleagues?
Thanks, John. It's a good report. Appreciate it.
All good? Okay. So then what we're going to do is move ahead with the resolution. Somebody want to make a motion? So moved and second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, and that was unanimous, Madam Clerk?
Now we move on to public hearings, item thirteen. Public hearing and resolution, twenty twenty-three dash two seven eight of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, annexing territory Fairfield Industrial Center Buildings Two and Three to Community Facilities District Number Twenty Twelve dash Two, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, as annexation number sixty-five, authorizing the levy of a special tax within the annexed territory, and submitting the levy of a special tax to the qualified electors thereof, and resolution twenty twenty-three dash two seven nine of the City Council of the City of Fairfield declaring the results of a special annexation election in territory annexed to Community Facilities District Number Twenty Twelve dash Two, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, determining the validity of prior proceedings and directing recording of amended notice of special tax lien for the City of Fairfield Community Facility District Number Twenty Twelve dash Two, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number Sixty-Five, Fairfield Industrial Center Buildings Two and Three. And our presenter is Public Works Senior Management Analyst, Chris Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Before you tonight is annexation number sixty-five for CFD twenty twelve dash two. This district funds citywide public safety services, open space operations, and park maintenance. The territory proposed for annexation is known as the Fairfield Industrial Center Buildings Numbers Two and Three, and once constructed, the development will be two industrial buildings. The City Council initiated this annexation process on October seventeenth with the adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two fifty-five, and by conducting the public hearing tonight, carrying out the ballot procedure, and adopting the proposed resolutions, council will complete the annexation process and the territory will be added to the district. Thank you.
I'm going to open the ballot.
We're going to open the public hearing. We didn't hear that. Okay. Anybody here to speak on this item? No, and I don't see any hands up.
No hands online and no cards for this item.
All right. And any questions here? Nope? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do your thing, Madam Clerk.
No, you still need to pass the resolution.
Oh. I take that back. Okay, it didn't seem that long. Okay. All right. You guys ready? Come on.
Madam Mayor, you might want to entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash two seven eight.
So moved?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, eyes are burning for some reason here.
Is it safe to open the ballot?
It's safe.
I got excited. And it is a yes vote. Like twenty number, twenty votes.
All right. Okay, then.
Do you have to entertain a motion for the other resolution?
That would be resolution twenty twenty-three dash two seven nine.
Yes.
Yes. So moved and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous?
All righty. And now we move on to item fourteen. Item fourteen, public hearing and resolution twenty twenty-three dash two eight zero of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving campaign contribution limits for the City of Fairfield elected offices, and the first reading and introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, establishing campaign contribution limits for the City of Fairfield elected offices. And our presenter is Assistant City Manager, Anna Giles.
And Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I need to make one correction. This is my oversight when I review the agenda. If the council decides to make a motion for the first reading and introduction of the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, you would also be waiving the full reading of the first reading.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight before you is an item referred by the mayor, establishing an ordinance for campaign contribution limits for elected offices here in Fairfield, and an accompanying resolution establishing no limits for campaign contributions. Currently, the city defaults to the state limit, which for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four is five thousand, five hundred dollars. So I'm going to turn it over to you for discussion, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Prior to the state's involvement, it was to where there was no limits. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Any, we have a speaker?
Madam, I think you have to open the public hearing, right? Okay.
I'm going to open the public hearing.
And we do have one speaker for this item. His name is Steve. Alroy? Alloy? Sorry. Alroy. Okay, I got it right.
Is this on?
You can raise that. There's a button on the front.
The podium itself?
Is that it?
Yeah, you got it.
All right. Good evening, Mayor of City Council. When I see this item, a lot of red flags go up. Obviously, no campaign contributions, flannery group coming in this next year, what a coincidence. I really have a serious concern that we're going to do the right thing with Travis Air Force Base. If we get too close to them, they'll just move. I'm old enough, I was around when Mayor Island left. We're still recuperating from that devastation. Travis might say okay, but that decision's made back in Washington, D.C. I predict, if you go to no limits, they're going to throw bribes at you that a lot of politicians won't say no to. And I know too many politicians, some of the good, some of the bad, they will make offers to make increased benefits for your city in return for your support, and I'd be naive to think there's not going to be a significant number that would accept that. So I would urge you to keep those limits this year. Like I said, the coincidence here is too strong, and just opens up to me, opens up for corruption. I hope you think it over. Good luck.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I don't have any more cards or hands raised line. Would anybody else currently here would like to speak on this item? Nope?
Nobody online?
No. I mean, there are people online, but just no hands raised. Yeah.
All right. I'll close the public hearing then and bring it back. If y'all have any discussion, questions? I guess not. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Williams?
So what stimulated this, this coming onto agenda? Because right now, it's four, I think it's four hundred.
It's fifty-five hundred.
Four thousand nine hundred.
It's fifty-five hundred now.
Oh, now it's going up to fifty-five. So.
I'll tell you, I put it on the agenda, and here's why. During, the, first of all, we've never had any restrictions in this city until the state imposed, and we've never had any problems that I've seen. I was a reporter for twenty years, looking at people's four sixties, and then of course, we have the time that I've spent here. Vacaville has no limits. Dixon, I think, is thirty thousand or so. The reason why I brought it forward is because I saw some things in the last campaign that were bothersome, and I really thought about it. And I thought, and I spoke to the people in Vacaville, why they didn't care to have any limits. And I think the argument is sound, and here's what it is. I know that if a wealthy person wants to give you, they said they want to give you twenty thousand dollars, but the limit's forty-nine hundred, they're going to get you that twenty thousand by giving it to other people, but, and through them, which is illegal, but they do do it, and I saw it in the last campaign. And so this way, when you get twenty thousand, you have who gave it to you reported. In other words, it's a lot more clear who you're getting that money from than people who will hide it, and people do hide it. I can assure you. Again, I saw it, I, we don't need to get into specifics, but it happens, okay? So I think it's better that we are transparent, so when people do get a lot of money, that it's there. And this has nothing to do with flannery. I think I've been the most outspoken against flannery, and I'm the one who brought this here. So it's, just so you know, it's not related. So that's where I'm coming from.
So no matter how much money, you just correct me if I'm wrong, right?
Right.
No matter how much of a donation you get towards your campaign, if it's over two hundred and fifty dollars, you cannot vote on a project if somebody gave you that money, correct?
A hundred percent.
Right.
Within.
Within a year.
Within a year before or after.
Within one year. Okay.
And that still stands, obviously. We're not messing with any of that. Thank you. Yes, that's correct. You can't, by law, you cannot vote. Any other comments, suggestions? You guys just want to leave, don't you? Yes, Councilwoman?
So for me, haven't had a long time to think about this, but for me, I feel uncomfortable lifting this pass to five fifty. Five, sorry, fifty-five, it's late, in my brain at least. Yeah, I, I feel uncomfortable. One thing, I just feel like I need, it needs more thought time, and I feel like I need to understand better the benefits to lifting it. You know, I just ran in this last election and had a lot of small, small campaigns. Maybe it's because I don't know any rich people that split up money to give it to me, I don't know. You know, I just can't relate, but I, I don't know. I just feel like, to me, just because I just ran into these conditions, I feel like that type of cap is completely reasonable. I, I, yeah, until I hear something really compelling, a reason why not to lift it, for me, I wouldn't want to, at least right now.
Okay. Makes sense. Anybody else? Yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you. Can you share some of the feedback you received from Vacaville, or what?
Yes. It was along the lines of just what I said. They actually passed it unanimously without discussion. And as you know, because I know you, you ran before when there was no limits on it, and there, there were no problems, I don't think. So anyway, I mean, it's up to you guys if you don't want to do that, that's fine, too. I'm not running right now, so it's, it's not about that. I thought it was a good time because nobody's running right now.
I would have to say that I just ran myself, and, and it was very difficult to raise money, whether it's a limit or no limit sometimes.
Yeah.
And I feel that because no one's running right now, it would be a good time, and I would be for lifting it to where there is no limit.
Is that a motion?
So I do entertain a motion.
Right.
And just to be clear, we have two items before you. You have a resolution, twenty twenty-three dash two eight zero, and then also the first reading, and waive the full reading, and introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. Just procedurally, what is happening here is the resolution, if you, that you've all reviewed, is to pass the resolution, but it would not take effect unless the ordinance is passed.
That's right.
So basically, you're passing a resolution that is in abeyance until the ordinance is passed, and then you're, you would waive first reading, introduce the ordinance, and then bring it back in thirty days for the second reading and passage.
Correct.
And then the law would take effect, I think, thirty days after that.
So that's your motion then, to do that and waive?
I still entertain a motion.
Okay. I'll second that. Okay, we got a first and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we want to do a roll call? Okay, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
Councilmember Pandora?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonason?
Aye.
Councilmember Vicaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
And Mayor Moy?
Vice Mayor.
I'm so sorry, Vice Mayor Pam.
Will you still get to vote today?
Yes, you do, sorry. I jumped in.
Yes, and I'm a yes.
Okay.
So that passes six one. And waive further reading? Is that what, is all done? Okay. We actually got through this. Wait, open, close, close, and, and I'd like for the Councilman Carr to speak a little bit about Dwayne, his good friend, and we're closing in his honor tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do want to dedicate the meeting and close in the honor of Dwayne Yarrow, longtime friend of mine. He was engaged to my sister, they lived together for about eight years. Graduated from Armyo in nineteen sixty-eight, and he's always been there. His nickname was Do-It Dwayne, because he was so fast and he was a motorcycle racer. And he actually at one time was, I think this, he had number two on his back, and I think he was like the fifth fastest guy on a speedway bike in the, in the country. So class act, gentlemen, and he will be missed. Dwayne Yarrow.
Thank you, sir, and he was a hell of a bike rider. Yes, thank you. We close in his honor. See you guys next time.